Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council tonight. We're glad you're all in attendance. Quite a group here tonight. We will begin tonight with an opening ceremonial. By the way, I should note that we have Councilwoman Lang and Councilman Christiansen excused tonight. They will not be with us this evening, but we do have a quorum, five of the seven. The opening ceremony, traditionally we do a pledge to the flag and we'll do that again tonight, but I thought maybe just a comment since yesterday was Labor Day and traditionally on holidays we think a lot about different things and my thoughts went back to our country was founded on many things and many things make it great. And we don't always appreciate the many different things. Certainly when you talk big business and big labor, they create different feelings in different people. But clearly, the role of labor in our country was very significant. And many of the things that we enjoy today, most people in our society can look back to some of those being fought for and earned by labor unions. And whatever your feelings towards unions, they have played a significant role in our society and Labor Day in honoring, I guess, laborers and individuals and those who work, which is most of us certainly a very beneficial thing. Good to think back on some of those and appreciate those who did the work before us. Many of the things we enjoy today were created for us, earned for us, fought for us by many different groups. By our veterans, by our workers, by religious groups, by organizations, political organizations, all of them played a role in the things that we enjoy today. And perhaps it's appropriate to look back and just give them a nod and say thank you for what you did for us and look what we can do for our part today. And as a part of that, would you stand and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, to the nomination of the law and to the justice of our home.
Thank you. I note that we have a couple of scout groups here. As we traditionally do at this point on our agenda, we would invite a representative from your group or troop or whatever, post, come forward and tell us why you're here, what you're here working on, your troop or post number, your schools you attend, so we just get a little bit of an idea about you. You don't have to introduce everyone, but just tell us your troop number. And so, would a young man come forward from each of those groups, representing them, and do that? We'll start over here?
Hi. Nice to meet you guys. We are Troop 210. We come from Granger East Ward. And what we're here for is we are working on multiple merit badges of citizenship within the community, working on the national citizenship as well as getting to know our representatives here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, over here, there's your group.
We are Troop 644. I'm here to learn about how our government operates, our government operates, our, what is it?
Well, how government operates is okay too.
Okay, I can't remember the last word. 64.
Citizenship in the community?
Yeah.
It's either that or communications typically. And what schools do you represent?
Michael and Valley.
So most of you are from that area around Valley?
Yeah, from that area.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for coming. Did we cover all of the scouts that are here? Okay. With that then, we'll continue on on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was August 23rd. We don't meet on the Tuesdays, so there was a bit of a span there. So, motion from the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the August 23rd minutes?
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion? Looks like they're okay the way we are. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. If those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next on our agenda, we have our Employee of the Month award and we turn to Councilman Young for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much. Here, Brian Mosharon is here.
Brian?
Oh, there he is. Please stand up and I'll read it one real short to nominate it by Levi Martinez. Brian really went out of his way to teach me the skills I will need to know to succeed at my new position here at West Valley City. He is great with the public and always the goals above and beyond, making sure that they are always happy. He shows great appreciation to his employees as well as the teams that work with us every day. I am making a good transition work in here and I love and I own it all to Brian. He is dedicated to the city and has been for 15 years. Thank you. Yeah. Shake hand right here.
Public quarks, but what part of public quarks?
Oh, the guy that we're buying the bucket truck.
He works with, indicated he works with streetlights and I guess next week we'll be approving a new bucket truck, so, to help him get up to those lights. I asked him if they could hire more tall people that could just reach up and do it, but they said the lights are too tall, so. We don't have any 40-foot tall people, so. Anyway, we are next on our comment period. We have several people who have signed up to speak. This is open. No topic is restricted. Well, I mean, gotta be decent. We have three people who have signed up. We remind you that you can take up to five minutes, but we'd prefer you didn't do more or I'll remind you.
Sir, so public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
And I need to ask, because we do have some public hearings that we will be having later, one on the zoning change, one on standards for lodging facilities, and one on residential design standards. If you're here to speak to those, we will have a separate public comment period for that. So if you signed up to speak and it was for those, we'll just say, I'll wait and we'll get to you a little bit later in our agenda. So, with that, Michael Paul Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Also, good evening to the scout troops that are here. It's pleasant to see you guys. I know my son was an Eagle Scout and hope all you guys are going to do the same thing. I'd like to bring to council's attention a progress report on a complaint that I brought to you approximately a month ago at a council meeting regarding a continuous yard sale. Since that time that I was in here, approximately eight or 10 days later, I received a letter from the zoning enforcement director. I'm not going to use any names tonight because they're not here to rebut anything and I don't want to step on anybody's toes. If you gentlemen would like to know the people that I spoke with, I'd be happy face to face to disclose that information to you, but I don't believe I feel comfortable in doing that in the forum as it is in front of the entire public. My problem has been is that I haven't been able to get this problem resolved. I came to the council over a year ago and we started to work on it and I ended up with a dead end. Unfortunately, that's what I've ended up with now. But I think it's up to me now to bring to attention exactly what happened so that you folks know and can understand the issue. This yard sale has had 12 sales this year. There wasn't any in the past couple of three weekends. I don't know whether he's out of town or what's happening, but that's the issue. I received a letter on the 23rd of August from the director of the zoning enforcement explaining to me that he needed to have an address and I called his office and gave him the address of the actual yard sale. The next day, the officer who was assigned that territory called me on the telephone. He was very conscientious about his discussion with me, made it very plain that he worked Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. He did not work Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and he wouldn't be in the future. So he said, as much as that's his territory, he advised me to take pictures of every yard sale, to provide a written log, and to call him and be prepared to go to court to testify against my neighbor. I found this very offensive . I'm not being paid to be an enforcement officer. I told him so. He explained to me two more times what I needed to do. I explained to him that that wasn't going to happen. That's the way it's gotta be, that's the way it's gotta be. The next day, I received a telephone call from the director explaining to me, first thing that I knew, that he has a part-time agent that works sometimes on Saturdays. That's my understanding. However, he explained to me also that there were hundreds of yard sales going on in West Valley City and that agent's job was to go around and take care of these and all the rest of the things that were happening. And they flat didn't have time to be bothered with my complaint. Now, we've got an issue here where we've actually got a code violation and they're not interested. Now, he explained to me the same thing that I got from the agent the day before. It's my job to go out and take pictures of every yard sale this person has, to make a log and prescribe the times and et cetera, call him and present it to him and tell that if I am willing to stand up in court and testify against my neighbor, then they can do something. But until I do that, I can't have anything. Not only was I told once, but I was told three times. I explained to it, this is not my job. I do not work for the zoning enforcement division of West Valley City and I won't be doing that. It's very simple. I will not be doing their job. He got angry and hung up the phone on me. So there's the result of our situation. The director does not care. Now...
So if you could begin to wind up your comments, it's been...
Okay. My final comment is simply this. I think you gentlemen need to take a look at the fact that we've got nothing but haphazard, part-time enforcement of your codes. You're the ones that make these ordinances. You're getting spit on the same way the rest of us are. They do what they want, when they want. I think you need to take a good look at the four-day, 10-hour-a-day work week. There's not a yard sale that I can think of that goes on on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. I'm very disappointed in handling this matter. I'm ashamed of the fact that West Valley City cannot, a city that's number two in the state, cannot handle simple tasks like this because everybody's on a four-day work week. All of yard sales go down on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They're not working that. And certainly, you're not going to conscript a neighbor to go and cause an issue and go to court against the neighbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Levon Hatch. Now, I guess there's another name here, Mamie Hill?
I'm Marty.
Or Marty.
We're good. So we represent Entheos Academy. Our address is 2606 South, 7200 West. It is on the Magna side, but we're being affected by the road that is going to be widened to connect through to 5600 West going through the Beasley Lane construction project, the 2520 South extension that will link for the ARA Industrial Center project stuff there. So our crosswalk is 275 feet from where that, where Beasley Lane is. And so, we are concerned about the safety of our students and the increase in traffic that that's going to cause right there on 7200 West. We know that some of the people, of course, on the West Valley side were made aware of meetings about that, but since we are located on the Magna side, we had no indication of this going on at all. It was just by happenstance that I was visiting with a friend and found out the plan for that, that road. What can you do to help us as far as keeping our children safe right there? Can we come up with an alternative route? Can they use the Frontage Road, expanding that versus the construction that will be going on and all the traffic that will be causing congestion close to our school? 275 feet, that's pretty scary to have our kids crossing the road. I mean, it's already scary having them cross the road. It is dangerous. They have two crossing guards out there and even then, sometimes the traffic is very belligerent.
Yeah, that was the other thing I was gonna say. We also, we were there, our school's been established since 2014 and that's when I found out that...
Well...
20, 20...
Is it 2012?
Oh, yeah. We were there since 2012 and I guess this proposal came down in 2014 and they were to notify the local, you know, the schools and the local residents that were on the Magna side and that never happened as well. And our biggest concern as well is we only have one exit as it is. West Valley City nor Magna would allow us to have another exit onto 7200 West because of the traffic concerns. So that's why I'm a little confused at why this project was allowed to happen because we weren't even allowed to have an extra exit, let alone having divert these large trucks onto such a small road as it is. And they won't allow a school to have more than one entrance or exit right now. And the school, in the morning, when they're heading to 201, that traffic gets backed up all the way to 35th South, 3500 South. And we're at 2606 South. So just think of the extra added impact on that traffic coming through on 7200 West. And once again, we'd like whoever these developers are or the project is so they can go forward, how they plan to keep our children safe. We want information sent to the school. That's what we're asking for as well.
What's the name of the school?
Entheos Academy. It's E-N-T-H-E-O-S Academy, A-C-A-D-E-M-Y. Thank you. And there's 520 students that go there and most of our students are in that trailer park that crossed that street.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Naitley.
Steve, if I didn't have any comments, how about a number one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you here for one of the others? Are you here for one of the other items you say or?
No. I think I know who you're looking for. I'm Stephen Naitley.
Oh, okay.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. My name is Stephen Naitley. I'm a recent citizen of West Valley City, just moved from Taylorsville six months ago. We purchased a home, a Beasley Circle, in February. We're very excited about it and for us, it was a start over for some situations in our life. And it's recently come to our attention that our road, Beasley Lane, is going to be extended to the ARA Industrial Complex now to 5600 West for large trucks to go through. And I just heard about this a few weeks ago. I understand that I wasn't a citizen when some of these plans were made and I understand that. But what I don't understand is how you can decide to extend large trucks inside of the street where there are kids living their lives. I want you to look at my son. Would you want your son to play less than 200 feet away from some large trucks that go in and out every single day? If you were going to do that originally, you never should have let those homes get built. That's reckless. It's underhanded. It's undermined. One of the homes on our street is going to be tore down for this project. I talked to her and got to know that lady on Sunday. She's very upset and she has not had any contact from West Valley City other than letters to say, stop growing your grass so that we can bulldoze your home by December. That's ridiculous. She's received no communication. Holidays are coming up. She's not even gonna have a home. I'm gonna have to watch my kids like a hawk. We moved into that street specifically because of what it has to offer. If I would have lived here in 2014, you better believe I would have been at the city council meeting voicing my opinion. But I wasn't here. But I'm here now because I found out. I want to know if there's a compromise that can be made. Frontage Road already exists. Why cannot we put a light right there? I go that route that was just talked about by Mrs. Hatch and her friend. And there are not more than one, maybe two trucks in the morning that are trying to get out onto 7200 West. Putting a light there would alleviate any kind of semi-traffic that needs to happen. We do not need to extend our road out for a few trucks. And I think of those kids as they walk to Entheos and there are a large amount of kids that walk there. She mentioned there's 500 students that go there. And I see them walk every day. That's absolutely dangerous for large trucks. All that will happen, eventually someone is going to get hit. I firmly believe that could happen. So I asked the West Valley City Council to help me. I emailed my city councilwoman and I never got a response back. And so here I am tonight pleading my case, hoping that they'll understand whoever is in charge of this project or has a hand in it or communication with it, that they'll listen to me and that they'll reconsider that and maybe we can come up with a compromise instead of just automatically doing this. I'm not the only one in that circle that has kids and there's a new house being built right now. And I don't know how those people are gonna feel when they find out as well. But I think we can stand for a compromise first and try another solution before we build a road. And that's what I ask you tonight is to please consider that and understand that that affects a lot of families. As a working father, I appreciate your comments about Labor Day. I work hard. Everything I do is for my son and for my other son and my daughter. That's what I do. That's what I live for. I just lost my job today. I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional, but it's been a very difficult day for me. But I want you to know that I still am proud to be a citizen in West Valley, but I think this road is a very bad idea. And I don't think it would remediate traffic problems that don't really exist in the first place. And that's my concern.
Thank you very much. That's all that had signed up to speak in our general comment period. Anyone else? Mr. Isaac then, any comments?
Well, I would say to Stephen and Levon and Marty that certainly, frankly, number one, I appreciate your being here this evening and I can assure the council and you that we will... Have you left your, by the way, have you left your numbers with our recorder?
No.
And maybe we can have somebody from our staff get ahold of you to explain what is going on out there and actually see if something can be done about some kind of a compromise. I'm unaware, Council, of the situation. Maybe I should be aware, more aware of it, but thank you for bringing it to our attention and we'll certainly look into this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To the council, any comments? Now, for those of you who come, we have an order in our agenda that we follow and of course, by state law, we're required to publish exactly what we're going to do and to allow for public input. Some of you may wonder why it's not more of a debate, but that's not the way it's set up. The debate will occur one-on-one, not in a public meeting, so we'll follow through on some of those. With that then, we continue on our agenda. And we're on item eight. We have now some public hearings. For the benefit of those of you who are not familiar in our agenda, we discuss these items on one week. We come here to our city council meeting the second week, where we hear it a second time. And so there's usually not as much debate, but understand that they're items that we have discussed previously. But in these public hearings, you're allowed to have input. We will begin with application number Z-8-2016 filed by Steve Glazos. It's a zoning change from A1 agriculture to A, which changes the minimum lot size from one acre to a half acre. This is at 6087 West Parkway Boulevard. We will consider the zoning change and a develop, let's see, a development agreement on that as well. And so, let's just see. Believe that this was, oh, one point, no, that's two units per acre. There are going to be 11 lots of about 22, just under 2,200 square feet on 8.8 and 1/4 acres. So they'll be building homes there based upon the standards that the city has in place. That is the issue that is before us. If you are here to speak to this, I will declare open the public input portion and invite anyone who wants to come forward to speak on this issue to come forward to the microphone. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? None? Apparently none to speak to this issue. If that being the case, then I will close the public hearing portion. We will come back to the council. We have three ordinances in connection with this that we will vote upon. You will note that we will do a roll call vote, which we're required to do, I believe. And so we will begin with ordinance number 16-39. This is the zoning change for that property we mentioned. With that, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 16-39.
Second. We have a motion and a second. It's property before us. Any further discussion? Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, just a comment that this is an area in the city where there's currently horse property and this will be great to continue to preserve the opportunity to have horses and have that on their property. So I think this is a, this is a really nice, nice piece that we're doing tonight.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, we will turn to our city record. Seeing no further comments, we will turn to our city recorder to take the roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we will go to resolution 16-137. This is a development agreement for six... Or excuse me, for seven and 1/4 acres at that location. And the development agreement for building the homes there, the property, as Councilman Vincent mentioned. With that introduction, then, to the council for resolution 16-137.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-137.
Second? We have it properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That was for most of the property, but we now consider resolution 16-138 for that location for one acre for a separate development agreement. And so this will complete the 8 and 1/4 acres. Then, to the council for this ordinance.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-138.
Second? We have it before us. Any further discussion? Okay. We'll turn to our recorder for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And as you see, most of the stuff we do isn't very exciting. But it sure means a lot to those individuals involved. And it's pretty routine work for us, but it's good for the city and to see this land go into nice homes. With that, we now go to our next public hearing. This is on application ZT-11-2016, filed by West Valley City. This is a zone text change that defines and creates standards for lodging facilities. And by the way, so you know, I wasn't here at our last meeting. We were on our annual family vacation, so I don't have as much background, but I will try and cover it, and the council will help me. Councilman Vincent, who's our mayor pro tem, took care of things while I was gone. And so he'll catch me up to speed if I miss anything. Oops, I forgot. I'm sorry, question?
I said, "I'm sorry, sir. I just stepped away for a second."
Oh, okay. I wasn't paying attention. I was looking at Councilman Vincent. So this particular item changes... There have not been major... We've had some developer standards, design standards, for lodging facilities. This kind of pulls it all together and changes that as we see some of the facilities going in, which we think doesn't meet the design or the standards that we want to have in the city. So this general plan change will identify that lodging facilities will be a minimum of three stories high, use brick, stone, or comparable material whenever stucco or fiber cement siding is used, a porch large enough for automobiles to pass through. Then there are six other... A minimum of six other items that they add in conjunction with those that they can choose from the list to make it unique for them. A minimum average room size, compliance with commercial design standards, and a restroom in each guest room. Interesting that we have those or need to have those, but we found that that is necessary. Our staff did out... Went out and did a lot of research on this to find out what was going on in the city and what needed to be done to improve that. That is the issue before us. Anything we need to add to that, Councilman Vincent?
No, I just think it's interesting, as they did their research, that some of these motels that don't have, like, full-service options, that there was a higher rate of crime at those locations. So not only does this kind of solve an issue of maybe some potential crime issues, but it just also beautifies our city with a better quality product.
You know, one of the great challenges as a city... We are a fairly large city by Utah standards, the second largest in Utah. And we have a little bit of everything. And of course, starting out as a farming and mining community, where those who worked at Kennecott lived here, you know, kind of just grew on its own and wasn't really designed well. And until the city was created, then we started to put in some standards. Even along the lines, you know, they talk about roads. No one ever planned for those, but as the city grows, you have to add roads. And so a lot of things have to happen over time. And this is that we're now faced with on the lodging standard is one of the things that we now need to add. And there will be more of those in the future as well. So with that introduction, I will now declare open the public comment period on this issue. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? No one wants to speak to the lodging issue. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. We'll bring it back to the council, and we will now consider ordinance 16-40 to amend our code to establish these lodging standards and definitions. To the council.
I move for approval of ordinance 16-40.
Second? We have the motion properly before us on this. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to another public input portion. This is on application ZT-12-2016. This was filed by the city. This amends multifamily residential design standards. And again, I'll go back to our issue document. The staff again went out and looked at multifamily residential developments to see which ones met the expectations we were having and if others were built and they were within the requirements we had set to figure out what we needed to do to improve that. So they looked at developments in our city, outside of the city, evaluated it, and came up with some proposals. And here's a brief summary of those. Requires every unit to have kitchen and bathroom. Requires garages for at least 50% of the units. Sets minimum unit sizes. Caps the amount of stucco and fiber cement siding. Requires at least 20% brick or stone where stucco or fiber cement is used. Does some building relief required. That's in the design of the building. How window treatments are handled. Garage treatments, roofs, and the number of amenities required and landscaping between driveways. Those are some of the items that were dealt with. What that does is it tries to create... We have a lot of, if you will, lower-income apartments that are less expensive, but many of them were just kind of built as they went along and are pretty plain. We need to expand that depth and breadth of available offerings in residential apartments. And so these standards will bring that, I believe, to a point where we will have... What we're missing is some of the higher end. We've had a few do those, and they've been very successful. So we think it will be a very good addition to the city. And so we propose these changes. With that, then, I will declare open the public comment period for these multifamily design standards. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to these? Well, none of the scouts wanted to speak. Isn't that interesting? Seeing that there is no public comment, we will close the public comment period. And for the benefit of the scouts, the procedures we followed are outlined mostly in state law to ensure that we have a process that allows public input, that allows public notification and participation. As you see, there's not a lot. So whenever you want to participate, you'll be one of the few that come and participate. And you should pay attention, because 20 years from now, some of you may be sitting in these seats. And then you'll have to figure it out. With that, closing the public comment period, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration of ordinance 16-41 to place these multifamily design standards in our municipal code.
Mayor, I move for approval of 16... Ordinance 16-41. And with a comment that I think in our study meeting today, we saw a good example of some multifamily residential with a lot of different relief to it. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
Very good. Second? We have it properly before us. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have on our agenda our resolutions. We'll begin with resolution 16-139. These do not have a public comment period. This resolution authorizes the city to award a contract for a sidewalk project on 3500 South at approximately 4900 West. This is along 3500 South in front of the Esperanza School and will complete the sidewalk there. Generally, we have given higher priority on most of our sidewalk projects to schools, but we have limited budget. We can't do them all. We can't do all the repairs on sidewalks. So we try and address those that are of the highest need. So this one is now before us with a proposal to award that to EECO Limited Liability Corporation for that project. By the way, that was... I didn't bring it up. I should have done that. The cost on that will be for a $35,000 project, of which the city will contribute $8,750 and the state $26,250. That's a state road, by the way. So we participate with them. That's the project before us. To the council, then, for comments or action.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-139.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 16-140. We will have four different ones here that deal with issues relating to employees of the city and their benefit package. This one is a proposal to... With the Workman's... Excuse me, Workers' Compensation Fund to provide services to the city to manage our workers' compensation claims and program for the city. They handle all of it. And actually, it's been beneficial because it's been economically justified, and we get the professional management of the full-time people in the Workers' Compensation Fund. This is just to renew this program for this year. We've had it in place before. It will continue. And I believe this one is the same cost or...
Yeah, the total cost, though, year to year is about $396,000. But it's actually... That premium has actually been reduced this year by...
What, $18,000?
$18,000.
$18,000 down. That fluctuates from year to year. That is the issue before us. Then, to the council for any comments or a motion.
Mayor, I just comment that we do value our employees and love to provide benefits for them, but many of those benefits, like this one, are also mandated by law. So, you know, we need to find a good workers' compensation plan and have chosen this one, and I've worked with this one before. And with that, I would move for approval of resolution 16-140.
Second? We have it properly before us, then. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we address resolution 16-141. This is an agreement with Behavioral Health Strategies for mental health benefits for city employees for the current year. Now, I believe this one was no change in cost. It's just a continuation of our current coverage. Don't think any change in benefits. That is the issue before us. That's a benefit provided to our employees. We'll continue with that. With that introduction, then, to the council for any comments or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution 16-141.
Second? We have the motion properly before us. Any further comments? None, and we'll go to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution 16-142. This is for the city to renew its dental benefits for employees of the city for the current fiscal year, starting July 1st. Takes us a little while to get these through when we get our costs. In fact, still working on some of those. This one, I believe, again, is no change in benefits, no change in cost.
At the mayor's request, though, I did find out that the premium that we normally pay for this particular benefit for the city is around $336,000 a year. You're right, sir. There's no change in this benefit in terms of premiums.
Doesn't come cheap, but employee costs, salaries, and benefits are the biggest costs we have in the city. With that introduction, then, to the council for any comments or a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-142.
Second? Motion is properly forth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote on the motion, on the resolution.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, we have before us resolution 16-143. This, again, is related to our employees. It's with Rocky Mountain Reserve for administrative services relating to what is referred to as the city's Cobra Plan. The Cobra Plan is for medical benefits provided for employees after they leave work. And this, again, is mandated by federal law that that service be available. Now, they have to pay for it, but we have to administer the program. And I believe this one, did it change in cost or...
Changed, sir, but this is one of those benefits of the employees when they're offered Cobra. They pay an administrative fee to receive that to this company. And Rocky Mountain is actually under our cafeteria plan. So the fee that we pay is through our broker. And yes, there is no change in the cost.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Then, to the council for comments or a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of 16-143.
Second? Property force. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we'll address resolution 16-144. If I can get it. Once in a while, my computer doesn't like the way I move my fingers. This is to purchase an EKG monitor for use by the fire department as they go around. And the majority of their calls are medical calls. And when they are required to deal with a medical situation, having these heart monitors are essential. And as new equipment becomes available, we gradually replace our older equipment. And this one is a... And this one is a 12-lead monitor for a paramedic division. It will cost almost $38,000. It will come from our existing budget called the Zoll Cardiac Monitor. But it helps in treating people and in saving lives, provides a lot of information, does more as far as communicating that information as needed so that we can provide critical care. With that introduction then, to the council for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 16-144.
Second. We have a motion and a second properly before us. Then, no further comments. To our recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our regularly scheduled business. We do not need an executive session. Any final comments from the council or our assistant city manager?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. With that then, our final motion.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.